I think what notice of this meeting is be given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act pursuant to public law nineteen seventy five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another cat. Number one inquiry is proclamation for emergency medical services. All right, Office of Mayor proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to a full to fill a gap provided by providing important out-of-hospital care and including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of the emergency medical service team with their career volunteer engagement and thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value of accomplishments of these of the emergency medical services provided by designating emergency medical services. Now therefore, be resolved, I Timothy McDonald, Deputy Mayor of Lacey Township, recognition of this event. Do hereby proclaim the week May fifteenth through twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as Emergency Medical Services Week. EMS Strong Team, EMS Week, rising to the challenge, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate program, ceremonies, and activities. So we have the two EMS spots here, I've got proclamations. Come on down, guys.
Ladies.
Yep.
No, can't.
My, they're very close.
Sorry. Get some money to buy some of these chairs.
Put it in the budget.
I know what you got, they keep it out.
Put it in next year's budget. I think this proclamation pretty much says it all. And I'm gonna ask some questions to you right now. Chief, how many, how many calls did you answer in twenty twenty-one? Thirteen hundred. Twenty-two. And that doesn't include those who come to town to help those of you guys with business. So there's more, more of that. So if you don't think these people aren't worthy, when they're out there begging, or you give them some money to help them out, please do. Chief, thank you. It's Captain?
Chief.
Chief.
Okay, very good, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Steve, you want to say anything? All right, special use permits. Hey, Lacey Township Methodist Church outdoor feed mark, June fourth, July ninth, and August ninth.
This has been reviewed and approved by the zoning office, I just need a motion to approve if you're in favor.
Move it.
Second?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then one from Pop- Popford Park Zoo, Pet Stock, September seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
This used to be their rock to adopt, and they're switching their name to Pet Stock this year, so it's a normal name, and they usually have motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing to add on to this agenda, so we can move right on. I need a motion to adjourn now.
Move the shoot. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think what notice of this meeting is be given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise with the flag and have a moment to slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dyckhoff is on a well-deserved vacation as required, I'm sitting in here. Okay, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, amending chapter two eighty-nine, recycling drop-off center.
In reference to Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, amending the supplement attached to the township of Lacey so as to amend chapter two eighty-nine dash seven entitled recycling drop-off center. At our recycling center, we take old tires for disposal. We were charging two dollars a tire, unfortunately, we have to raise it to three dollars a tire because that's what our vendor is charging us.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. First reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, authorizing acquisition of lot eighteen fifty-two, lots forty-one and forty-two.
Resolution of Township, uh, in reference to Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of lot eighteen fifty-two, lots forty-one and forty-two on Arthur Street pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, con twelve, dash, five. This is a non-performing lot, this is part of our phase three of the affordable housing project, which is located adjacent to the current one off of Calvin Street. We are purchasing this with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the amount of nine thousand dollars. Motion, motion on the first reading?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, establishing a cap bank.
In reference to Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, con four, dash, forty-five point fourteen. This, again, the cap bank ordinance allows the municipality to bank and utilize permitted appropriations in future years, which provides for a three-point-five percent increase in appropriations over the previous year's final appropriations, and therefore allows township to exceed the otherwise permissible budget limits. As authorized under the state law, the ordinance also allows the township to use some for all of that three-point-five percent in the two years immediately following the current budget period, if it is not needed in the current year. This portion is referred to as a cap bank ordinance because it allows the governing body to bank with permission it was given to spend a certain amount of money in one year but was not actually spent for use in subsequent years. Second reading, open the floor for public comments.
Seeing the motion, close the floor.
Motion on the ordinance, please.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna? Yeah, Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-five, authorizing the budget by title only. The budget has been published, it has been published on our website as well. As we all know, the general appropriations is thirty-five million, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. The reserve on collected taxes is an amount of one million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-six thousand, forty-five cents. Total general appropriations is thirty-seven million, two hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, less the anticipated revenues of nineteen million, two dollar, nineteen million, two thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars and sixty cents. And the amount to be raised for the support of the municipal budget is eighteen million, two hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and forty cents.
What does all this mean? What this means is that we are seeing a tax increase of one point four cents, which is phenomenal in today's inflation rate and what's going on out there in the world. The owner of an average assessed home of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars would expect an annual increase of thirty-nine dollars a year on their municipal side of the tax bill, which equates to three dollars and twenty-five cents per month. With that, we are not deferring school taxes again for the sixth year in a row. We are utilizing four point two million dollars of our surplus in order to support this current budget. So can I have a motion on this resolution so we can go to public comment?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Now we need to open the floor to public comment on the two thousand and twenty-two municipal budget.
Joe Bransford, one thirteen, Amber Miss Way. I just want to congratulate the committee and administrator for a budget. I stood up here last year when it was eleven point three percent, and that would be a tough road to go every year. So we are very pleased, at least I am, and the people that I've talked to, with this type of an effort from the, from the committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Regina De Sands of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I am beyond disappointed after going to the Lacey Township School District Budget Meeting to find out that this committee found it necessary to stop paying for the trash and recycling for the school district, which has been done as a courtesy for many, many years. I'm beyond disappointed, and I would hope that maybe this committee can sharpen your pencils again and reinstate that courtesy. I'd really appreciate it, because you know the state only cut the school district three point two million dollars. And I can speak freely now because I'm no longer a board member, but I was astonished to see that you stopped paying for the trash and recycling, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we'd like to comment on that, actually.
Go right ahead.
So, Regina, so the trash has gone back and forth over the years. So when I first got on the committee nine years ago, we weren't paying for it, and we weren't, and we weren't, and we weren't. So we're back to not paying for it again, and there's different reasons why, you know, you know, how we manage our budget. And our responsibility, our responsibility is to manage our budget, and the school's responsibility is to manage their budget. In addition, don't forget that when we have to, when we lose tax appeals, we have to make up the difference to the, to all the property owners that win their tax appeals. We don't go back to the school and request a give-back for the tax.
Right, I understand.
So, you know, we have our own challenges with our budget, as you, as when you were on the committee, you did as well, so I just want to make that clear.
I mean, when I was on the board.
When you were on the board, so.
Anybody else? All right.
Can we have a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Have a motion to close the floor. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-six, adopting the twenty twenty-two municipal law.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, adopting the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Move it.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, authorizing the bonding for the twenty twenty-two budget project income.
In reference to Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating three million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in bonds and notes to finance the same, to finance a portion of the cost, therefore, authorized in and by the Township of Lacey and the county motion. This is our twenty twenty-two capital improvement budget. This is acquisitions of emergency services equipment, fire, and EMS. This is also equipment for the police department, public works, municipal vehicle for the inspection department, projects such as phase two of the Northwest Barnicot Pines, which there's a three hundred fifty-three thousand dollar grant to accept. Northeast Barnicot Pines paving, phase three of the Northwest Barnicot Pines engineering, improvements to Sunrise Boulevard, which is all the way down to Sanctuary, South railroad avenue extension project, improvements to Stephanie Court varies, parks and recreation improvements as well. Can we have a, open the floor for a second reading on this ordinance?
Seeing the motion to close, or, right?
Yep.
So we have a vote second and a.
Who's gonna second that motion to close the floor? All right. Motion on the ordinance now.
That's the one.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-seven, authorizing the extension of leave of absence for employees.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the extension of a leave of absence for Shannon Quinn, this is an eternity thing.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one forty-eight, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the public works department.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works. So we're usually high school or college students that come in during the summer months to give us some assistance with our maintenance on our parks.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-nine, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees for the recreation department.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the recreation department. This will be for our beach patrol staff, our parks and playground staff, our bus driver schedule, and our extended school year at the high school staff, and our office staff, and with it, staff.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dyckhoff. I mean, Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Okay. Yes. All right. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty, amending the contract with the township prosecutor to add additional alternate prosecutor.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, amending the contract with Sina Holzablen Zabarski as township prosecutor to add Brian M. Bartlett as an additional alternate township prosecutor.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-one, authorizing the lease on the dock.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the lease and money charged for a municipal dock. So we have two individuals that, one has sold their boat, and the other one is moving out of state debt or giving up their dock. Motion to refund?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-two, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Second.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-three, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacey County, motion state in New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of nine million, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents for paying county schools this week.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kurtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mrs. Julieanna?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
But abstain on D zero four hundred.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They owe me out. Okay. Monthly reports.
Municipal clerks office for the month of April collected receipts in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars. Municipal docks were collecting receipts in the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Road opening permits for the month of April were in the amount of five thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars. Recycling commodity in the amount of fourteen nineteen eighty. Tire deposits in the amount of one hundred ninety, truck parking in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Community development, I'm gonna work backwards here. For the month of December, collected receipts in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. For the month of January, in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. For the month of February, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and two cents. For the month of March, in the amount of ninety thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars. And for the month of April, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Motion to accept the reports as read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, motion to approve a raffle license for the CDA Parents Association.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I have nothing to add on to this.
Captain McKenna, you're welcome, Mr. Kurtolo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to thank everybody involved with the budget process. We saw some spirited commentary tonight, as you know, these things are difficult. I want to thank all the department heads, the present company included. There's always spirited commentary up here in public view on what we can fund and what we can't fund. When we exceed our cap, that's when things get a little bit troublesome and cumbersome moving forward into the future. So it's just important to be, as much as we want to help everybody, fiscally responsible. But as you heard Administrator Luray say, what it's gonna cost on the municipal side for the average assessed home, I think that's as responsible as we can get. When you call for an ambulance, we need that ambulance to come. When a police response is necessary, we need that police officer to come and protect our, our house. So we control what we can control. What, I really, and I, and I thought about these, these words carefully. What I really want to apologize for is what we've been seeing that we have no control over on the news. So I just wrote a couple of things down, it barely scratches the surface, so I don't want to take up everybody's time. So this administration, now, and this is where it hits us, here in O eight seven three one, and Lenoka, and Bamber, and everywhere else, this is where it hits us. And it's very, very unfortunate compared to where we were just a few years ago. So we have virtually no border security in our southern border. Administration reacts by quote-unquote and blanket, let's defund the police. We have all-time high inflation, we print more money, another thirty-eight billion the other day, give it to Ukraine so they can protect their border. Hundred-and-eight thousand overdose deaths, thirty percent higher than in twenty nineteen. Let's collectively sit down, what the administration says in a roundabout way, and I'm encapsulating here, let's decriminalize pot. Baby formula shortage for all our new moms, let's export baby formula while we have empty shelves here in Lacey and in other places. Gas at an all-time high. So let's not renew some of the leases in Anwar and in the Gulf of Mexico, where we produce our, our gas and harvest our, our minerals and our crude in a more economically and more ecologically safe way than anyone else. But instead of doing that, then let's export from criminal regimes that dislike us at best, or hate us or want us dead at worst. Let's threaten our Supreme Court justices when there's something that comes down that you don't like. Then let's hire a truth teller. If you want to speak truth to power, beware of being canceled, because now there's a minister of truth in, in the White House that will handle you, maybe possibly blackish you, and, and put you somewhere where you don't want to be. So folks, there's a lot that's upside down now. Patriotism and America First is being perverted. I personally don't like it. It'd be easy for me to gloss this over, not be polarizing figure, but I feel like I have a responsibility to speak about these things because we love our town, we love our country, we're very patriotic in our town, you see it in Lacey Day, you see it everywhere we go. And when you see these good folks up here, they've advocated for us. Our ninth district and Senator Connors have advocated for our schools, taking their time to meet with folks, and we want to, we want to try to do all we can. But when we get this cascade, this crescendo, this confluence of items coming down from the federal government, it does affect us. So thank God for our police department, our emergency services, try to protect us, keep us safe, because we got, we got a few more years. I'm trying to be non-political, I'm stating facts. Turn on any news and you'll see it. So thank my colleagues for the work they've done, thank these services for keeping us safe, and I'm very concerned for our future as a whole here in, in this great country of ours, I love it, I'd lay down for it, and I want to see it continue on. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I appreciate it.
And Mrs. Julieanna?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, I'd like to just follow with Mr. Kurtolo, I agree with everything you just said, so thank you for speaking for me too, because that's all the truth, what you just spoke about.
It's an honor, thank you.
Thank you. And then, of course, I just wanted to thank our emergency services, because without them, we wouldn't be the town that we are. And it's good to see people come out, and we need to get more people coming out, so thank you, everyone. And don't forget, we have our Memorial Day Parade on the twenty-ninth, is that? That Monday is the twenty-ninth, I want to just make sure we give the right date.
Yeah, let me support my calendar.
Thank you.
It's actually the thirtieth.
Oh, it's the thirtieth, so I make sure, because we'll be having the parade this year, so make sure you come out and support. Thank you.
Committee, Kenneth?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just also wanted to touch on the budget. There was a great job by all the department heads, the administration, and also all the EMS, their, their treasurers and CFOs. I was surprised that the budget came in as it, you know, where it came in at. Everybody, especially considering the amount of inflation that's going on, you just couldn't tell, I really couldn't tell where it was gonna go this year. But I thought it was a great team effort by really, like I said, all the department heads, administration, our CFO, administrator. We provide a lot of services for, for all the people in town, I think we do a really good job of keeping it as, as efficient as possible, and has been for many years. And over at the planning board, despite all the, the rising rates and all the inflation, the planning board's been really busy over the past two, three months, which I think is a good sign. Part of it is that the lead time to get anything approved is, is, you know, you're not talking months, you're talking years, so I know a lot of it is probably just gearing up much further down the road, but it's a good sign that, that, you know, some of the businesses have been able to be resilient in this, and, you know, going from the COVID where they're locked down and having to, you know, deal with supply chain issues and rising interest rates and not being able to get the materials that they need at the time. So it's a good thing that, that the planning board is staying busy, so.
Thank you. I want to thank Libby Cabella and Ray Downey and Hurstaff, Veronica and Hurstaff, Township Committee, who have worked tirelessly for us. And when I tell you that the start of the twenty twenty-three budget will begin probably next week, you can take that to the back. We've worked very hard on this budget, and every, every now and then, like last year, we had to really pop it just to be looked to the future, so. It's a great job, one point four cents, forty dollars, ten dollars a quarter, that, that, really good job. What's the budget look like for next year? Inflation is up, so some of the things that we're planning on, I don't know if we're gonna be able to afford it. We've got to see where they are, and I can tell you this, I think I spoke about this one other time. I was talking to Casey Parker about three, four weeks ago, and asphalt per spread ton, back in September, was ninety dollars. It's now the one fifteen to one twenty per spread ton. And they're not taking contracts unless they have escalators, which means if price goes up, we gotta pay the price. So we've got, we've got a couple of big projects ahead of us that we may have to spread out over a few more years than we anticipated, just to make sure we can cover the price, so that's what's coming up in the budget of twenty twenty-three. And I just want to thank everybody here who has done that, have worked hard on this budget. We, we work hard for the twenty twenty-three budget, I can promise you that. Couple of things, camp in the home, our, our, our summer camp is open, you can go online. There is a price increase, and that is due to the fact that minimum wage is going up, this is a direct reflection of that. Beach bath has gone up, they're a percent, direct reflection of minimum wage going up, okay? I also want to thank our EMS, I've said this many, many times, and our fraternal organizations. Without them, what they do for this town, our firefighters, our EMS, there's no way we could run this town. They do so much, until you sit up here and realize what they do, it's absolutely astonishing. Ninety percent of the volunteers, if not all, are volunteers, that's, they love this town, and that's why they do it. I also want to talk about S three thirty. It's in the Senate, just confirmed with Senator Connors beside me, that it's still in the committee. And this is a budget, this is a bill that will restore what was taken from Lacey Township back in the nineties, and it is the energy receipt tax. And I want to give everybody an example of this. Had this, had they not fooled with the formula, they'd taken it from us. Instead of getting eleven point one in twenty twenty-one, we would have gotten eighteen million and fifty-seven dollars. That's almost seven million dollars difference. Could we have taken, handled the school board and helped them out? Yeah. We just don't have it this year. It's very unfortunate, okay? So if you have, oh, yeah, and the toll, this is since two thousand and one. We lost seventy-three million, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars in aid that should have come to Lacey Township that we didn't get. So keep that in mind when we start talking about taxes, how do we have to plan? And I was in Veronica's office today, and we were talking about stuff, and I said, you know, we gotta start looking at five, six years. And that's what this community really does. Twenty twenty-two's over, twenty twenty-three's halfway over for us. We're on to twenty twenty-four in a few months. It's just, it's just the way it is. Great Memorial Day, that's a great time, it's right over here at Vice Centennial Park, get out there, and that's all I have. Let me open up to the public, so the public have any comments? Sir, come on down.
Good to see you, sir.
Hey.
Been a long time.
Nicholas Spaltrow, twenty-five, Dunbarry Drive, in the Seabreeze Community, Fork River South, two issues. One is, I pay my taxes online, and I use the, that, that web portal, Point and Pay. Tried it the other day, payment failed. Tried it again, payment failed. Sent my wife over with a check, paid the taxes three times.
I saw your email today.
Okay.
You know, it came in at 5:30 tonight, and we were already done for the day, so I can't even speak with the tax collector to resolve this for you right now.
The bank won't reverse it, so you guys got to fix it.
Yeah, we, we, we're the client, so we have to reverse it.
So, that was a bit shocking, because it said payment failed, and it didn't give me a confirmation number, and I looked at the checking account today online, and go like, what is this number so wrong? So we figured. So the second item is, I travel a parkway like a lot of people here do, up and down a parkway. Dump trucks, they come from that way on Lacy Road, I don't know exactly where they come from. Senator, I reached out to your office, and you guys were kind of, a gentleman called me from, Sean called me from the Highway Authority yesterday, and he said that he would meet with the state police and try to enforce things. The dump trucks, I, I put two windshields, I've got a pretty new car, I replaced the windshield already. My wife's car, two windshields, another car, three windshields, my daughter's car, because these stones are coming off these trucks, and they're doing 80, 85 miles an hour. They're passing me in the right lane. I mean, they got to slow down, and they got, somehow these trucks got to be covered, kept clean, but I don't know what we can do, but, you know, you know, I, I realize that, you know, there's commerce involved, and we don't want to take away people's, you know, living, but they got to slow down. I, I mean, I, one, one of the things, Senator, I mean, 55 miles an hour is what those dump trucks should be doing. They shouldn't be doing 85, you know?
Don't be doing 55 in front of them.
They're bigger trucks.
I'd rather have to walk them like that.
Well, you know, but, but literally, I mean, and then they hit, when they hit the bridge, right, they get to the bridge where it's not paved, truck hops, and it just rains all the stuff.
They're supposed to be covered. They're supposed to be covered.
Yeah, but if any, you know, if you guys got any influence into this, I don't know whether it could be, you know, the word, get out to these guys, but there's a lot of dump truck traffic on the parkway. I was coming back from Manahawk today, four of them in a, in a gang, every one of them got to be doing 75, 80. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And they're great, great job on the taxes.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Regina? Hold up, jump in the blue. Jump in the blue.
My name is Renier Vanderherp, I'm from 126 Station Drive. This is my first township meeting, so I'm getting, I'm getting enlightened a little bit. The reason I, I came to this township meeting is, I was wondering what the guys were doing about this zoning ordinance about farm animals in residential areas. I know it was tabled because of COVID, but Mr. Downey, the code enforcement officer, said that, you know, that until they start doing something bad, there's not much they can do about this particular problem.
Do you have a particular problem?
Um, well, every morning I've woken up at four, between four and five o'clock in the morning by roosters. Okay? That's the problem.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I don't mind that, I don't mind neighbors having chickens and having a few eggs and stuff like that, but I just don't like to be getting woken up at five o'clock in the morning by roosters. It's affecting my health, it's affecting my marriage, you know? You know, I work late lots of times, and I know they were working on the ordinance, and I just like a little rat.
Well, again, we have looked at it several times over, over the years, and it's just something that we haven't been able to draw enough support for to do it. I mean, we can look at it again to determine what we're going to do.
I can bring you a couple of extra anchors.
Chickens in their roosters now, I mean, we have people that are getting goats in these residential areas, we have pigs now, and, you know.
Our surrounding townships have.
And it's not just over in this gentleman's neighborhood, it is in, of yet.
Surrounding townships have, all have anti-rooster ordinances, and it really needs to be addressed. I mean, I've tried everything, I've tried negotiating with my neighbors, being very nice, trying to be a good neighbor and everything else.
Let me ask my colleague, maybe let's look at some other.
I signed a complaint with the court over it.
Okay.
I signed a noise complaint. They couldn't do anything about it. They have an ordinance in this town, they couldn't do anything about it, a noise complaint.
Well, we're, we're under review with the state DEP on our noise ordinance, so that's why we can't do anything with our noise ordinance right now.
We'll, we'll put on a list to be reviewed, and.
Okay.
Sure. That's, that's what we do at this point.
Yeah, give us a couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, it's, it's, this has been going on for a year now.
If it's a quality of life issue, we're going to look into it.
Yeah, it is, it is. And, and, you know, I negotiated with them for a while, and they got rid of one or two roosters, and then they got three more. And it's like, come on, guys, you know, yes. You know, we're neighbors here, you know? I mean, what do you got to do, right? I mean, I've signed noise complaints, I've had the cops over there trying to sign noise complaints, they won't enforce it because of, I guess, the review or whatever on the noise. Do you know where that's at?
It's in the DEP's against, we have an authority response, and they did respond to me that they are still in the process of reviewing it. They told me possibly in another 10 days or so.
Okay. Okay, so I'll come to the next meeting to see where we're at with it. Because if they, they didn't enforce that, I can get, I can get this done, you know? And, and that's what I really need at this point. Like I said, I don't care about the chickens, they don't bother me, but I don't like being woken up at four o'clock. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David T. Eugenio, now at 612 Pittney Court, Forkett River, and I'm here to invite you to the second annual car show by the Rotary Club of Forkett River. The show's going to be on May 21st, that's not this Saturday, but next Saturday. I hope you bring your beautiful car, and it's so nice to have your support over the years. Last year, we were shooting for 100 cars, we felt really good luck and advertised well. We got 179 showed up, it was a really nice show, and Chris, best not last year.
Where, where's the beer?
Lacy High School, having a collection of 10 to 2. Do you have an, do you have an 18 car? Four trucks, it's worth.
This is the only guy that's a car buff.
I know, he's got one, too. Anyway, thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, see you. Walk down, Jim.
Regina, Descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. It's been very windy this past week, and I'd like to ask people to please take some pride in your neighborhood and clean up the front of your house if something has blown